All right, we're going to call meeting in order. I'm asking Ms. Jeff if she would leave us to the word of prayer and then we'll follow with the pledge of allegiance. We have a core and presence.
Father, I just want to thank you, your Lord, for this day. Just thank you for the beautiful ray of sunshine you've given to us. I pray to the Lord that you will nourish this land, dear Lord, with water as we still are so dry. I pray to the Lord for those who are serving our military, watch over and protect them, guide them, as they protect our freedom. I ask, dear Lord, for blessings over this court. I pray that each decision, dear Lord, will be made with clarity and that nothing, dear Lord, will be vicious, that it will all be according to your plan. I pray to the Lord for safety as the roadhands go out, dear Lord, on the roads. I pray that you will keep them hydrated. I thank you for loving us. Thank you for all that you do for us, and I ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We've got a pretty jam packed deal here, so our first, number three, is Tomlin and Company to present fiscal year 2023 audit report.
Morning.
How's it going?
Oh, no, I'm in.
Now, what were you at here?
No, you gotta see that, the detail. You gotta see the detail before. Trying to get out of that one.
Very quickly.
Yeah, I noticed that. I saw that.
Thank you.
Oh, you're down there.
Oh, we can bring them both down here.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll speak soon.
That way we're united front down here, you know.
Coffee chairs this morning.
Thank you.
It's kind of tall, man.
Oh, she did something. Thank y'all. We really, really appreciate it. We've got one more report to hand out, but I'm just gonna stick with the graphs and not, not go into the nitty gritty of the report. Of course, if y'all have questions on that report, then y'all can always call us at any time. If Loretta can't answer it, but Loretta can answer it probably quicker than we can. But anyway, I'll just go over the graphs and kind of give you, oh, just a summary of what happened at the county. I'll tell you, the last, the last five years too have been, last five or six years, right? You've had lots of flood, flood damage to deal with and lots of fires. I mean, it is, it's been a heck of a year, really, a heck of a last few years for the county. I've got one graph that'll kind of show it, kind of, kind of look at a six-year average of that fund balance, what happened. But it's, it's been interesting. And then a lot, you know, all the counties have gotten this ARPA funds, too. These ARPA funds are these, these grant funds that are, you know, really through the coronavirus relief. You know, a lot of those, and those funds have to be used by 2025, which y'all used, a good portion of them this year. I think you still have around half a million dollars sitting there in unearned revenue or deferred revenue related to those, those ARPA funds. And those have to be used, I don't remember the date, in 25, maybe it was June or something like that, or 2025 total.
Like budgeted or like income.
I think that's right. So you want to make sure you do that, so that doesn't have to go back to the government, federal government, so that's. All right, let's get to some of the numbers. We did have a clean opinion. Always seem to forget that, but, so, you know, everything was in accordance with GAAP as far as records, et cetera, books, et cetera. And I'm Jeff Graham. I don't, I've met all of y'all and y'all probably know Tara as well. I think we've been here probably lots of years, so. Anyway, it was a clean opinion. We did not have any findings related back to single audit. In the single audit this year, you know, I think we had, basically it was the coronavirus funds, the ARPA funds is what we selected because the government requires those to be high risk, so typically those would always be selected. Most likely next year, those will not be selected because it's below, I think, the, it's below the threshold now. So I think the prior year, we had that plus the community and development block grants that we had in the single audit. The one good news on that single audit front too is, is the threshold's going up to a million dollars. I can't remember what year. Is that 2025?
Twenty twenty-five, I think.
So that's good for a lot of our counties and cities. A lot of times, we don't have to have a single audit, which is just more work that the auditors have to do and Loretta has to mess with as well. So it's, you know, that's, that's good news on that front. And a lot of these coronavirus or these ARPA funds, they're, they're kind of, they're kind of drying up, so they're going away too. So a lot of that's kind of leaving. But that first, already one of that first graph that audited opinion is clean, you know, what we call a clean opinion, unmodified. And then that next graph that says reports sections at the top, that just gives you an idea of how the report's set up. Basically, we'll be dealing with two, two pieces of that, the government-wide. And when you think about the government-wide financials, that is everything capitalized, just like a normal business. So government-wide is when we capitalize all your fixed assets, when you show depreciation related to that. You capitalize all your debt as well. We've had a couple of new things. I'm gonna go ahead and talk about those now. But I think last year, we implemented the lease standard. Well, the lease standard really required you to take these, these operating leases. A lot of them were copiers, to be honest. We had a bunch, Xerox leases. But you also had some equipment. I think you had two motor graders. Maybe the phone system as well, I believe, was also a lease. What this new standard required is basically they're saying, okay, well, the county has a right to use that asset when you, when you make that lease. So you book an asset for that right to use, to use that, that asset, and then you book a corresponding liability. Sometimes there's a little difference as far as interest, but, but not much. Now, this year, we had Gatsby ninety-six, which basically is what we call Sabidas. That's our new term, Sabidas. But that, what that is, is subscription-based information technology. So you think about, well, what does that relate back to? It relates back to software leases. So you've got Tyler Technologies, which was about $300,000, and also the sheriff's, can't remember the name of that. Yes, yes. Also the lease for that, so that was about $160,000. So kind of the same concept, that the county has a right to use that software for so many years and it's, it's based on the term of that software lease agreement. So you've got an asset booked and then you've got a corresponding liability booked as well. So that kind of catches us up on the new standards. There was, there were some other standards that came about that were more clarification type.
What was the purpose of doing that? Other than creating you guys more work and us more?
I think probably a lot of it was just to show, you know, the, the general public, you know, that you've got these leases out there, that, that you have the asset and then the corresponding liability. I think a lot of it was just disclosure there. We disclosed it before, but anyway, that, in somebody's wisdom, they decided to put it on the books. So it's, it doesn't really matter. It's kind of a wash.
Exactly.
Yeah, yep, yep. We don't always understand what our people implement on the Gatsby side. Yes, it's kind of different. The next graph is total assets and liabilities. Again, this is government-wide. One thing we need to, you know, you think about the pension too. The pension is a big either asset or liability for the county every year. Well, last year, you had a pension asset, if y'all recall. That was like, everybody had a pension asset, it seemed like. Well, now everybody has a pension liability again. So it was like, if you go back and look at the last nine or 10 years, they've always been a liability. And all of a sudden, we had an asset and now it's back to a liability. So when you talk about that change, I mean, for instance, this year, we had $800,000 in pension expense. Last year, we had $800,000 in pension revenues. So that's got to flow through this government-wide somewhere. So a lot of, a lot of that's, you got to keep in mind how that affects everything. The other thing is, over the last three or four years, you've gotten all these grants, right? You've gotten these ARPA grants, you've gotten these FEMA grants for the flooding, you've got these community and development block grants. Well, as those funds come in as cash, on the fund side, you're basically showing it as revenues up top. It's cash in. Well, the cash out's coming now. So a lot of that's coming on the fund side when we talk about those fund statements. But on government-wide, you're basically on a accrual basis. So this is going to match you up better as far as that, you know, showing that revenue with those expenditures. But when we get to the fund statements, that's probably how y'all budget more. We need to keep that in mind as well. But what happened with the assets, your cash decreased about $3 million. Again, you're funding a lot of these grants that you've gotten over the years. You're, and you're pension, you had a pension asset of $1.1 million last year. This year, you've got a pension liability of $1.9 million. So, you know, that difference, $800,000 out there, or more than $800,000. You also look at those inflows and outflows that relate to these pensions, but the net effect was about $800,000. Your PP&amp;E went up quite a bit, about $1.005 million in the cost basis, or actually net. But you had a lot more, you had a couple of excavators you purchased and several other pieces of equipment, trailers, tractors, and several vehicles. I think two or three on the government-wide side, maybe four. So you've had several larger, you know, fixed asset purchases the last few years. That's another thing that affects that government-wide side, because you've got your depreciation up here on this, on this front end. Well, the appreciation this year was $1.2 million and last year's about $800,000. So really, that's catching up, you know, as you buy this equipment, you're, on the government-wide side, you're saying, okay, what's, what's the life of that equipment? Say it's 10 years. Well, you know, as you build more equipment in there and you're just, you're building more of that depreciation. And as the years go on, that'll depreciate down for that value. The other thing is your investments improved quite a bit and, because you actually have an interest rate that, that matters now. I mean, I think your interest went up $100,000. So that's $200,000 that the county can utilize every year, just, just from interest, which is really, really good. We've seen that really affect everybody, so it's. And you had, your due forms too are also up a little bit. And the due forms really relate back to, okay, well, at one, at this point in time, what do you have due back? Most of it deals with grants. So if you've spent the money already on some of these grants that are reimbursement, then you basically have a due from that, the federal government. And as soon as you file that, you'll get the, the cash for that. Liability side, your, your payables actually went down a little bit, nearly $400,000. A lot of that's, you know, probably timing. And then your unearned revenue went down $1.5 million, and that relate, related solely, I think, back to ARPA. So as you use those funds in ARPA, they're gonna, they're gonna be shown as an expense and they're gonna come out of that unearned revenue, which is the asset or the revenue side. So it's basically a wash on this accrual side. But, you know, you can see the numbers, your total assets and deferred outflows, 18.2 million versus 18.4 million. So it's really, really pretty close. And a lot, your liabilities went down, 7.3 last year to basically 6.8 million. And a lot of that, again, the unearned revenue was a big, a big part of that change. That was $1.5 million, so that was quite a bit of change in that, that liability side. The next graph is your net position in total. And your net position is $11.6 million government-wide, and that went up $666,000, you know, between years. Again, this is government-wide. We're looking at everything, your fixed assets, less your debt, et cetera. The next graph kind of gives you a breakout of your net position by category. Really nothing unusual. Your investment in capital assets, you would expect that to kind of start, continue to increase just with the fixed assets you're purchasing. As far as your unrestricted, or your unrestricted and restricted, really, you can combine those to compare it to last year's. Four point eight million this year, last year's 5.4. And we'll talk about that here in a minute as far as that change. And then the change in net assets, $553,000 for, for 2023. And last year, you, you really had a heck of a year. A lot of it was the pension. You think about it, you, you went from a $2 million liability in '21, then '22, all of a sudden, you had a $1.1 million asset. So a lot of that's going to kind of flow in and out of the government-wide. So I'd say a lot of that difference, last year was $1.6 million, this year's 553,000. A lot of that's going to be your pension effect. And then the other effect we just talked about was depreciation. That was about half a million dollars. So the depreciation, the pension are the two main things. I'll tell you, some things that really increased were your health insurance though, just almost down the line. A lot of your group health increased and just a lot of your general expenditures. Not materially, but just, you know, things are more expensive in a lot of cases. I mean, they're just, they're just getting that way. And then also your raises, you know, just the general raises you get for, for county and just payroll, you got a big payroll. So, you know, at three or four percent, kind of makes a difference in the numbers. But anyway, you still had a real, a positive year, you know, a good year, half a million dollars on the government-wide side is still a positive change. Especially with everything I've had to deal with. It's been just a lot, a lot of, just a lot of activity I've had to deal with, so. The next graph is funded by general revenues. And what this really tells you is, okay, you know, of all the expenditures at the county, how much is really funded by, by general revenues? And what we're talking about mainly is property taxes, right? So it's, you're, you're really more consistent with the other years if you kind of look at what, what happened. Again, 2022, you had a real, you had a nice pension bonus that year, I would say. So really, the 8.4 is more consistent, I think, with what you've been seeing is eight, eight-seven or eight-eight in '21, and then 2020 was 8.6. So really, not, not unusual this year. More unusual last year that it was so good, to be honest, with the pension. And then the next graph is general revenues by type, and you can see that the main, the main area of property taxes is, is pretty close. It actually was down a little bit from last year. It's 7.7, last year it was about 7.8. So down about $100,000, a little over $100,000. Where you really kind of made up for it is if that, that last little bit is other, that other, that 823,000, that includes a gain on sale of, that increased $80,000. And also, we just talked about your interest. Interest income increased about $200,000.
What was the first thing you mentioned?
Uh, gain on sale of assets, that increased about $80,000. Now, so you're, as you're buying this equipment, you're also disposing of things, which, you know, getting a gain for the county that comes back to, for funds you can utilize. The next graph is fund balance in total. And this, in fund balance, so we're, we're kind of switching gears with, with fund balance. Again, this, this is probably what you're more used to seeing as far as what you're budgeting, cash in and cash out, more of a cash basis. And your total fund balance is $5.7 million in 2023. It did decrease about $597,000. If, if you really average, if, if you take in, actually take in 2018 and, and you said, okay, I'm gonna look at 2018 and really, y'all have had some ups and downs with these grants that are flowing in. If I take 2018 and add in the net income, net expense, or net income, net loss that you've had over those six years, it comes out to $6,000. So it's really, a lot of your ups and downs are those grants, there's those grants flow in. And what's happening now is, well, those grants have flowed in, so now you're having to have those expenditures that go out to, to pay those. So one year may look like you had a really good year, but what happened was you received a lot of grants that year and you just hadn't expended the money yet. So a lot of that was, you have had some, some additional expenditures. Really, your expenditures increased in public safety area, and that was mainly in the dis, I think, the dispatch. You had some additional expenditures, then also, what was the other one I looked at? Oh, the sheriff's commissary. Y'all had some expenditures as far as, I think, some shelving and some other remodeling y'all had in the, for the jail thing. So you had some, some additional expenditures there. Plus, part of your grant funds flowed, flowed through this year, $87,000. So that's, that's gonna also increase that. We talked about raises, three to four percent raises, some additional expenditures. So really, you know, stuff we kind of expected. You also had $1.5 million in, in capital purchases. So you had a little more in, in capital purchases, which is going to go straight to that road and bridge line item predominantly. And your revenues were actually up $558,000. Part of that was interest we just talked about. Your charges for services actually went up. Your auto license fees were actually quite a bit higher than last year. And then the gain on sale, we talked about the gain on sale and the $80,000 that created funds for the, for the county. The next graph is fund balance by type. It really, really doesn't, not earth-shattering. It's, it's, what you're really looking at is what is, what is your, most of that $4.2 million in that first line item is, is your general fund. So your general fund is still, you know, in a pretty healthy position of over $4 million. I think the road and bridges is covered in that, but it's not much money. And then the last, the last areas is $1.5 million. It's your other non-major. A lot of that's your grant funds and some of it's ARPA, but I don't think there's much left in ARPA. It's pretty down, isn't it? Oh, oh, that's right. Yep. ARPA is separate. It's really nothing unusual. A lot of, a lot of that, a lot of that decrease would flow, you know, you'd expect it to kind of flow through your general and road and bridge, because that's where you're spending a lot of your, a lot of your funds at this point. The next graph is, you know, audit findings. We did not, not have any audit findings in your single audit or, or otherwise. It's, you know, really, really clean, and I know y'all have had some real challenges with your software. I know. I don't want to bring it up. It seems like it's getting there, so I know it's not easy. You have, I mean, think about it, you have 20 entities really, what you're, what you're dealing with. Because you have every fund, you know, every, you know, every precinct, the sheriff, you've got lots of different areas. So you're basically dealing with 20 different companies. And so you can imagine some of the AP and the AR and how you have to track some of that. And I think Loretta, her crew did a really good job. The next graph is required communications. We did not have anything unusual, and we will, we will finalize that 260 letter. I think we need to get a few more signatures correct on the rep letter. Nothing, nothing unusual in that, it'll show you adjustments. Most of your, your larger adjustments are going to relate back to your pension and OPEB, and then also fixed assets, I guess, is where we're going to have an adjustment. As far as your risk, you know, your, your, your significant risk, really, generally, you're required to look at management override. And what that means is, okay, well, we've, we've got to make sure nobody's being pressured to make entries. So we'll do a lot of work on, on adjusting entries, so on journal entries internally. And then the other thing is revenue recognition. That's, that's caught a lot of attention in the last few years with Gatsby and FASB. But are you recognizing revenue correctly? So you can imagine if that was wrong or off, that that could be significant. So those are our two risks that we concentrate on. Now, as far as your estimates, your estimates, basically, you know, at any county, it's going to be your pension and OPEB, and those are huge estimates. And you have an actuary that calculates it, so it's not like we're coming up with these numbers. And your other estimates are your depreciation, like, you know, your fixed assets. What are you estimating the lives for those fixed assets, which that's, that could change your government-wide if you said, well, we think this vehicle's going to last 40 years. Well, you know, that's probably not reasonable, but that stretches out that expenditure on the government-wide. So that's what we're looking for there. And then the last thing is, you know, as far as your delinquent taxes, how much, how much of an allowance do we need against that? I think that's right at $259,000, about, about half of it is what we generally see. Other than that, I don't know anything else in those required communications is, is different. Then the next graph is new standard. We talked about these. And Gatsby ninety-two really was an omnibus. It, it had lots of just clarification of different standards. It had some pension and OPEB clarification, I think it's. Some Gatsby eighty-four, some, some risk stuff and some derivative stuff. A lot of it didn't really apply to you. And Gatsby ninety-six, we talked about, was the Sabidas, subscription-based leases that were put in on the books. So that's really, I don't think anything else coming up is, is really overly significant as far as the way that you, you track things that I can think of, but. Again, we just appreciate it. We know it's an effort to get ready for us, so we, we really appreciate the county. We've been involved a while and we certainly appreciate y'all. Judge, thank you for giving us time.
You bet. You guys, being here, looks like you did a very thorough job.
They did a great job and they were still working on it last week, so.
There's so many more disclosures, like you said, it's just crazy. Where, where we live now.
More regulations.
Yes, yes, sir. We tried to bring rain, but we didn't, so it's getting, getting drier, drier in our part of the world, so.
We'll, we'll let you come back if you will.
If we can make that happen, we'll go to lots of presentations. Yeah, well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I'll give you that signed letter.
Oh, is it all signed? Oh, thank you.
Yeah, we'll get you a PDF.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck with going back.
Yeah, thank you so much.
How's your mom?
Oh, she's doing okay. Yeah, she's doing better. She's nice.
What's that, a report on?
That was report only, but you need to accept it.
Motion, motion accept from Mr. Raines, circled by Mr. Maxwell. Those are papers say aye. Post-sent sign, motion carries. Consent agenda.
Kathy, I'll send you a, a standard copy.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Um, I have June the 10th, 2024 minutes. I have a personnel report. I do have certificate, certification of additional revenues. I have amendment changes by funds. And I also have JEA budget adjustments. I don't know if you want to talk about those right here or not. I do not have a signed investment report. Auditor treasures report, I have a May 2024, and it should have a treasures affidavit with it. We have an unreconciled June the 19th, 2024 report as well. The only financial reports I've seen was a DMV. And I show 10 bills, claims and accounts. Cybersecurity certificates, I have Becky Rogers, Jessica Trammell. On the purchase and acknowledgements, I show a Chad Goldston. And that's all that I'm showing.
Kathy, there is a, an investment report in the May report.
Okay, my question to you, are you gonna continue to leave in those with the May report? If so, can we take three off and not be duplicated?
I'm going to continue putting them in the May, or in the monthly reports, but if you want them on a separate, if you want us to hand it to you separately, we'll do that. But I think they need to be approved by Commissioner's court.
Okay, so if you have the line item set up by itself like it is, then I'm gonna have to have something to go with that.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
We'll just leave it on there. You'll hand me a report, a signed report, okay?
Or Christina can scan it too.
Or additional revenue.
Certification of additional revenue?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get it.
It was not emailed. It was handed this morning.
Oh. Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I looked again this morning and I didn't get it.
I meant to.
It's all matter.
And I'd be glad to make copies if everybody wants one.
No, you know what I was looking for. They're in there.
Okay. But I will send everybody copies, so you have it in your records.
My money in there, Mrs. Loretta.
Your money?
She, she knew what I was looking for.
What money are you looking for?
Ah, any kind.
I don't offhand remember it.
Judge, did you need to see?
Yeah.
Here, I'll just get, Sonia, will you make copies of these for everybody?
That's the only reason why I knew Loretta is because I was looking for those two ticker deals.
I got them.
Thank you.
So one, two, three, four, five copies.
Matter of fact, that's all my sticky note.
Make sure they got mine in the mail.
Yeah.
I do need to go through the May financial report. I do need to go through the May financial report.
You said we're going over the financial.
The May financial, yes. If you're ready to. Yeah. Yeah, my scanner's not working, so I had to stand there and hand feed like ten, fifteen pages at a time. Uh, the first section of that report is the statement of cash position. And it's showing the cash balances, um, by fund and account type. There is a summary page on page eighteen. And these are general ledger balances, uh, starts on page seventeen. Uh, general ledger balances as of May thirty-first. And the column you're looking at is the actual ending balance. And we'll use this again during budget, I'm sure. Then the statement of revenue and expense. And there are one hundred nine pages of that, but it is showing original total budget, current budget, period activity, fiscal activity. It will show encumbrances, um, and then the last column is, uh, the variance is what is remaining and the last column is the percent remaining. And there should be a summary on this one also at the end of the report. There is not. And, and the first one hundred nine pages, oh, there is, on page one oh eight is the summary by fund. And then on page one ten, that starts adult probation and then juvenile probation. And after the statement of revenue and expense, it's the balance sheet and it is by fund.
See anyone?
No.
There's yours, thank you. Sorry.
Handy, undetermined, they knocked you over. Um, after the balance sheet is the pledged security listing. You'll see there's one from Prosperity Bank. The pledged market value is one hundred fifteen thousand, two seventy-eight, seventy. And then the management report from First Financial Bank. And on the second page, bottom right, the pledged market value from First Financial Bank, securities for all county funds on deposit, thirteen million, six thousand, seven hundred, seventy-six dollars, eighty-eight cents. And that is sufficient to cover our funds on deposit. The next report, it says, top left, it says budget comparison report. This is the interest. And if you're looking at the twenty, the first three columns, actually, the first three columns with numbers in them, uh, the twenty twenty-two year-to-date interest. And then the twenty twenty-three year-to-date interest and the twenty twenty-four year-to-date interest. And you'll see from twenty-three, we had one hundred forty-one thousand, eight hundred forty-three dollars, fifty-two cents. And as of May, this year, two hundred ninety thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars, two cents. Then the schedule of lease payments. And then Christina's report is in there. And as of May thirty-first, the reconciled balances of funds she is responsible for, ten million, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred sixty-eight dollars, seventy-nine cents. And then the last thing is the investment report for May, showing the investments by fund and type. Um, the collateral, as I said, the collateral on cash balances and bank certificates of deposit was adequate for the period. And this report is made in accordance with the provisions of Government Code two-two-five-six, the Public Funds Investment Act. The investments held on the Eastland County portfolio comply with the Public Funds Investment Act and with the county's investment policies and strategies.
Good enough.
These are all, these are Christina's pages and then my signature pages.
Okay, any questions for the auditor?
The JEA, are you going to handle those?
She has an item on the agenda. Sonya, Sonya, would you ask Tracy for the fuel bid file?
Sorry, for what?
Fuel bid file.
Okay.
And I need a letter opener and paper plates. Thank you.
Okay, motion by Mr. Raines, second by Mr. Maxwell, accept the consent agenda. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye. You post same sign. Agenda is accepted. Uh, five A. A while everybody's silent.
Everybody else has put one on good. I said, everybody else has put one on.
Um, I talked to Walter, to Josh and to Daryl, uh, about the burn ban and Walter said there's no range for, uh, no range for two weeks. And he said with hot temps and high winds, we ought to consider it. Josh said, if not now, we're going to need one soon. These hundred degree days of drying is out pretty quick. And Daryl said, he's, he, he said, I'm, they're getting, he, he's thinking they're getting close. And he said, they'll go with majority, so. The don't sure have hot temperatures and the don't sure had high winds.
Everybody should have got their burning done. It's been off for a while. Robert, did you get your burn done?
I got my burn done.
You still ain't done yet? Been camping some of those. We got half slyders in this one.
Yeah. Make the rest of them look good.
Yeah, if we didn't, we don't know where you'd be, Rodney.
My recommendation is we go and put it back on.
I'll make the motion good.
Okay, motion by Mr. Raines, second by Mr. Quinn. Show. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign. Hey, Ginger, we're putting the burn ban back on. Emergency amendments.
There are emergency amendments this time. There are two. I can find them.
I've only got one on the email. I've got two today.
Which one do you have, Robert?
We had the, uh, jail.
Um, what's the amount? Thirty-two, six, forty-seven?
Thirty-four, fifty, thirty-four thousand, fifty cents.
I got thirty-two, five, forty-seven, fifty-eight.
Sonya, will you make copies of these?
Yeah, that's what I printed this morning.
That.
Which is the amount?
The thirty-two.
Five, forty-seven, fifty-eight is the correct one. What was emailed, the thirty-four?
Yeah, that's what I emailed. That's what I printed out.
Yeah, but I saw one for thirty-two.
The original, the original quote was for thirty-four and then once it was approved and everything, he went back and figured in everything correctly. And it's thirty-two, the, the road. What, thirty-two one hundred.
And then the second one we have is a sheriff slash jail for twenty-five thousand?
Mm-hmm, and that's the remainder of the roof.
Okay.
And on both of those, emergencies have already been declared. It's just the amendments need to be approved.
So just give me those. Or Christina's.
Yes, and I'll take Christina's too. Thank you.
It's the original brand.
Okay, thank you.
Y'all make the motion for this emergency and allow you time.
Okay, motion by Mr. Raines, second by Mr. Maxwell. On the, uh, two emergency amendments, all those in favor say aye. I post same sign, motion carries.
Other staff.
It's going to be, uh.
I need to take a break so I can put my fifth bid on Sonya, because she's going to get dressed my steps.
And it's not even budget yet.
I know.
Okay, uh, C, discuss and consider appointment of Chief Fraser, Randy Clarkson, designated officer, and authorize him to calculate the twenty twenty-four known revenue rate, photo approval rate, the minimums rates and actual collection rates.
And this just takes action from the court?
I'll make the motion good.
Okay, motion by Mr. Raines, second by Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Uh, D, road crossing agreement, precinct two.
This for Staff Water, uh, the crossing the road, whether it been a board, five seventy-eight. I just need a approval of it.
Mr. Staff Water?
Staff Water.
Okay, motion by Mr. Maxwell, second by Mr. Wilson. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign, motion carries.
Are you going to pass yours around for signature, James?
Uh, yeah, we need to get one to him, yeah.
Give mine to him.
We need, we need to sign it.
Can you pass yours around?
Yeah.
And I'll get them a copy. Do you need a copy?
Uh, yeah.
So you got it. Okay, open.
Did you say yes or no, James? I'm sorry, for yourself.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, we could at least put the right judge here.
Mm-hmm, I noticed that.
Uh, E, open and accept. See if you were going to sign anything. Open and accept, uh, bulk fuel purchases award contract.
Open and accept the bids.
Whatever.
Um, these were advertised and put on the website. The packet was, um, bids were due Friday, this past Friday, June twenty-first at noon. And we received one bid by that time. And it is from JT Horn Oil Company.
And we did receive, uh, conflict of interest filed in my office.
Okay, good.
So I'm assuming if we've only got one, that's the one we accept.
Right, but I'll read it. Well, the court can, um.
It was advertised or whatever, did it?
It was in the newspaper. There's public notice in the newspaper and it was on the, it's on the website. Um, Renee Bonilla thought the deadline was today and he missed it.
Because I talked to him about two, three weeks ago. He said he was going to have a bid in.
Well, we still have to accept it.
Yes, and let me read off, um, on the freight charge, it is four and a half cents per gallon. No, actually. He has point zero four five. On the margin of profit, he also has point zero four five. So his total freight and profit is nine cents per gallon. The contract is at, I believe, on the twenty-seventh. The court could extend the bid deadline, but I've already read this in court.
I was fixing to say, there's no way to do much already ready.
Did they have conflict of interest with that?
There is the CIQ in here. I will have to get the form, the ethics form twelve ninety-five from, from JT Horn.
So it's a conflict of, okay.
Yes, it is in here.
How's that compared to what it was last year?
I don't remember.
I don't remember.
Eighty-five. Five cents?
So one of four cents?
For sure.
Four cents a gallon doesn't sound like much. They're pumping thousands of gallons. Okay, well, it looks like we're, we have one bid, then officially we'll put in on time. I need a motion to accept the bid through bulk fuel purchase. Motion by Mr. Maxwell, second by Mr. Wilson. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign. Uh, F, lyric telemedicine report for April and May, with Q.
Um, you should each have the. Um, you should each have the April and May reports. And just wanted to go over the utilization, and that's the first thing in the box. Um, in April, we had a one hundred eight primary users and fifty-nine dependents. In May, um, there were four users. In June, we had one hundred eight enrolled participants and fifty-nine dependents, and there were three uses during May. So not a lot of utilization. Oh, there were consultations too.
So this is just not, not a...
Okay, so I'm telling you how many we enrolled in the month. So consultations during April were four, and during May were seven.
So we not utilizing it because this is, uh, the time of the year when people are less sick, or...
Um, our utilization this year has not been what it has been in prior years.
Is it, what's, what's your opinion why that's happening?
Um, I'm not really sure.
It's all the steps everybody's doing, they gotta make money.
It's healthier workforce, yes.
It is that, but it's also with changing, and changing, and changing. It's gotten more complicated, complicated, more complicated.
We're talking about changing the telemedicine?
Yeah.
I didn't know for a full year and a half that it was lyric.
Yeah, yeah, it's, 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 it's the continued... Yeah, well, sleep.
I guess.
That part of it is that...
She been healthy?
Yeah. Part, part of it is the changing, and everybody's not fully aware of everything.
Right, my telemedicine, I guess, was purchased by Lyric. It's still my telemedicine, but now it's under Lyric.
And there's an app and all kinds of stuff.
And that's the thing, with everything, a- all of our benefits, they want the users to use the app.
Yeah.
But I think that's just a sign of the times too.
Yeah.
I will put it on your phone.
Is it under Lyric, is it under telemedicine?
It's under Lyric.
Yeah.
So do we need to push out something to the employees and, um...
Well, I mean, we're fixing to do open enrollment again, so...
I think it'd be education, like Robert and I mentioned, just educate small flyer.
Flyers don't work.
Comes up like that, it's, it's a, it's an app.
Something that will make awareness to the employees.
Yeah. I, and, and I'll talk to you about this during budget, but, yeah. Um, educating employees has been an issue for a long time, as far as getting information to them, so...
And maybe push it to the department heads, and saying, you know, when we have our office staff meetings, we can all do it right there.
Well, you didn't even know we did it for a year and a half, and you...
I was uneducated.
Well, I knew that.
Well, it was discussed during the open enrollment meetings last year.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that's just so overwhelming.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a lot, yeah.
Yeah, there needs to be, there needs to be a, a shorter presentation, I think. You, you only got people's attention for a short amount of time. Yeah. Alright, so, uh, motion to accept the April and May report. Motion. Motion by Mr. Maxwell. Second by Mr. Crenshaw, all those in favor say aye. All the same sign. Uh, G, discuss and consider the savings grant, or make, or adoption of savings maintenance plan, Mr. Key.
Um, the Attorney General's Office did a audit, basically, of the savings grant, and one of the items that we needed to adopt was a maintenance plan. We have one from twenty nineteen, I think, but we needed an updated plan. Um, so this is the plan. The A.G.'s office sent me the template, so I basically just put Eastland County's information in, and the court needs to adopt it.
And allow you to sign, Judge?
Yes.
Yes.
I like to know.
Okay, second, motion by Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Wilson, all those in favor say aye. All the same sign, motion carries. Sheriff, at some point in time, I wanna talk to you about that grant. Let's understand, from the auditor, that's about less than seven thousand dollars, is that correct?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking to the sheriff.
No, uh, well, I, I had a question. There's a whole lot of, there's a whole lot of steps that we take every year for that seven thousand dollars, I just wanna make sure that we're getting the good bang for our buck on it.
Well, it does all the victim notifications and all that stuff, it's, it's a good, it's a good thing. There's some aspects of it that I don't like, but overall, it's a good service for victims.
As you're not a requirement of the notification that would fall back on?
Yeah, and if we don't have that, then we are...
Yeah.
We're calling every five seconds.
Just wondering, 'cause it sure is a lot to come to that thing. Anyway. Uh, discuss and consider meaning to copier lease agreement with, how do you pronounce that? McQuary?
Um, I don't know how to pronounce that, but this is the all copy, copiers. Um, and...
So this is the same company?
It's the same company, yes. And I talked to Andrea May, and right now she has a purchased copier on the north side, um, and she would like a copier on, a leased copier on the south side. So she's requesting to add that copier to the lease.
I'll make the motion, same.
Is there anything we need to sign?
I don't have it yet.
Oh, okay.
I guess I have a question, how much is that copying machine?
It's less than two thousand a year.
Motion by Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Wilson, all those in favor say aye. All the same sign.
Can we add allow once the judge gets the documents?
Yeah, we just decided.
Thank you.
Okay, I, request to expand County Clerk Records Management funds, Ms. Jento.
I received, uh, a call from the auditor's office, and I received, they received a bill from BizPro Tech, which is from Kerry Hancock, uh, installed an Adobe Standard for twenty-twenty software. I made a second, and they're asking how to pay it, the software cost was three hundred ninety-nine dollars, the install was a hundred and five dollars. Since it maintains the records on my computer, I think it's, uh, acceptable to pay from County Clerk Records Management. So I'm just asking for an expenditure of five hundred and four dollars to be paid from that account.
I'll make the motion, same.
Motion by Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Maxwell, all those in favor say aye. All the same sign, motion carries. J, report on the formation of the twenty-twenty-four Salary Grievance Committee, Ms. Jento.
Okay, we have seven that has accepted, four have declined, one with no response. Regardless of that response on that last one, we will not have the required numbers that, of nine, that the court voted on. Um, so if we do have a grievance, we'll have to take that up again and, um, reform who has ex, the formation of the grievance committee. So, it's on the court.
Okay, so we need nine on there, right?
Yes, that's what the court chose, non-public.
Is there, um, is there a variation of that? In other words?
No.
Can you do seven public and two county, or...
Oh, you can do seven, six elected officials and three public members. So the court would have to go back and...
Change all that?
Yes.
I was thinking it'd be easy just to do seven public and two elected.
The law gives you two choices, and non-public or six and three.
Naturally.
Yeah, so anyway.
That would make too much sense. Alright, so we don't have one. Basically.
Exactly.
Okay. So what do we need to do on that, just accept, accept your report?
No action.
No action. Uh, discuss, K, discuss and consider moving funds from judges and clerks payroll budget line to other budget lines, Ms. Rogers.
I apologize, I was gonna make it pretty and attached. I didn't move so you get copies.
I'm asking, um, that we move fifteen thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents from the judges and clerks payroll. Uh, there's some line items that are over budget, which is the temporary. Um, the overtime, which I came and asked for money for overtime, and I did not realize that we had to reclass seventeen hundred dollars. I thought I was gonna have a surplus of that, and I didn't. So, I'm asking, um, in the computer supplies, is under, under, or, uh, I've, I've gone over on that. Um, I also need, uh, money for the travel seminar expense, I've got a seminar coming up in August. And operating supplies, I've got two pretty big invoices that I need to pay. Um, equipment lease, Rico, um, charges over a certain, over thirteen hundred copies, and I had to use out of that instead of copier supplies, because I was low on copier supplies. So if we can move this much into equipment lease and copier supplies, I'll be good to pay the right line item out of the remaining budget.
So what's the... So the, the adjustment for additional overtime needed was eleven thousand for you, and how much was the other one? Or, 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 what am I seeing here?
Okay, on, Judge, if you'll look at this one, it should be in your...
Yeah.
How much was it tall, fifteen?
Fifteen, five fifty-four, sixty-eight.
You said two large invoices for operating supplies?
Yeah, that's, I got that one.
It is, it's easier to read, it shows the overages in this column part.
So if I'm reading this right, this is, uh...
And from part, it's all early voting, which is county's responsibility, correct?
The seven thousand seven hundred is county's responsibility.
And the others, are they reimbursable from the entity?
No, that, this is what Secretary of State pays, this is the total amount, Secretary of State pays this much of it, and the county pays that.
But it's county's responsibility because of early voting?
Well, county's responsibility. There was, I do not know what the percentage is, but they paid for some, one hundred percent of some of the early voting, and only a percentage of the rest of it.
And this is from the primaries?
Yes.
Okay. There's a lot of this additional cost in having that paper valid?
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to ask.
Okay, so going back to the overtime, overtime original, if I'm reading this right, the original budget was seven thousand six thirty? Current total budget's fourteen thousand one thirty. And so you're under four thirteen fifty?
Yes, sir.
And you're asking to move how much into that?
Four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. So I'm already going cross-eyed when it started budget.
Yeah, then I'm cross-eyed because I...
So we, we started with the original budget of seven thousand six hundred, and we basically used seven thousand additional overtime than what we had...
Had planned.
Had planned for that.
Yes.
And what was that?
That was because I had well over the amount of comp time when the first of the year. And between the city of Ranger recall election and the primary election, I couldn't take off work, and so they had to pay me overtime. And when I came to, uh, ask for the sixty-five hundred, I didn't realize that seventeen hundred had already been paid, I thought it was upcoming. So when we moved to sixty-five hundred, I thought I was gonna actually end up with a surplus after moving that. And they had to reclass mine and Jessica's overtime for that. So that's what happened there. I'm working towards taking time off, so I don't have that happen again.
And this is also the security deputy's overtime too?
Oh, yes.
It's not just...
Right, right, but mine was a big chunk of it.
And so where, where are we moving your funds around to make this up for?
From the judges and clerks payroll.
Okay. So you still have plenty in there?
Right.
I thought we were gonna be upside down on that.
Oh, no, sir, no, sir. I've, I've, it may not look like it, guys, but I've been really trying to get everything right. So... And then the temporary, um, and once again, it was my misunderstanding. Cheyenne was working, um, as a clerk, and I kept her a little bit longer than what I could, and I didn't realize that there was a timeline on using her as a clerk. And so it came out of temporary, and so now we're moving it to, to correct that.
Okay, any questions for permission?
I'll make the motion to make the adjustment, Judge.
Okay, motion. Motion by Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Maxwell, to move the funds from judges and clerks payroll line to other budget lines, all those...
Thank you all.
In favor, say aye. All the same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
L, consider...
You'll have a good day.
Discuss and consider resolutions supporting government initiatives, opposition, any title line changes. Um, hopefully you guys had a chance to read this, Mr. Rain, I enlisted him on this, and he, uh, put his suggestions in there, and I put my suggestions in there, and this is what we wound up with. Basically, the A.G.'s office is suing the federal government to, uh, fight any basically discriminatory Title IX mandates. Uh, and, uh, I sent out an email Friday, some Thursday, I think, some Friday, to all the superintendents in, uh, the county. And I got, the only two responses I got was from Gorman and from Rising Star, and both of them said they weren't opposed to anything, and they had no comments to add on that deal, so that's where we're at.
I'll make the motion for the resolution.
Motion by Mr. Rain. Is that you, Jane?
I second.
Second by Mr. Crenshaw.
Sorry, Crenshaw?
Yes, all those in favor say aye. All the same sign, and judge folks, aye.
Does anyone have that? Are you signing it, Jen?
Yeah, um...
Uh, the only one I've got is state. Uh, the only one I've got stapled.
Yeah, I've got, uh, I think I've got the new improved one. Um... Let me see. I'll send that to... Yeah. Yeah, sorry. Sorry. Hey, Shelby? I'm sending you the, well, just, I'm sending you the whole deal, but on that, uh, Eastland County Title Nine Resolution deal, there's some, there's some spaces in there. Could you line that up and print that off so the court can sign it? Thanks. Okay, we'll get one.
How many's the stapler, Don?
Discuss and consider disposing of county property, Donna Gray. In the house.
Don't put your feet on the table, though.
That's an electric stinker, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You don't know whose department it was, do you? Well, just dispose of it. Y'all give me permission to get rid of it, take it to the cycle yard, uh, yard, and donate the money if we get money out of it.
Sure you donate it too.
Crisis center.
Okay, we entertain a motion for Mr. Gray to dispose of county property. Motion by Mr. Wilson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Maxwell, all those in favor say aye. Oppose same sign, motion carries.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Donna.
Careful with that stapler, don't hurt your bag.
Discuss and consider, uh, entering into a credit agreement with Essinon Concrete and the County of Eastland, Mr. Crenshaw.
Yeah, we're, uh, we have an account, we don't, we don't, just... S R M bought this place out. We don't have an account to get concrete. We've been, we're gonna try to pour some concrete, and we'd like to get permission to have an agreement for, for a credit agreement.
So S R, uh, S R M got bought out, English, or is that what you said?
It's been sold like three times.
Yeah, Volkan bought it.
Third time, Volkan bought it the second time, so, and then now...
This company is... You don't pour some low water crossing or something, Dan?
Yeah, I'm gonna try it.
You don't mind when you leave it down?
I got, I got some coats. I'm gonna try, try the concrete in.
Oh, yeah.
I hope, I hope it works. If they start floating, well, then we can forget all this. With concrete, but I, I think it'll work. I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Rain. Second, uh... Mr. Maxwell, all those in favor say aye. Oppose same sign, motion carries.
And already we've got all the paperwork.
I do, and I requested a fifteen thousand dollar credit line. Um, Fisher Crenshaw said probably ten, but with the timing of payables, I went ahead and requested the additional five.
You don't think I need to pour any low water crossing, Ron?
Yeah, I hope you do, yeah. I got two, I'm ready to breach out. It can't hurt us.
Uh, O, review preliminary budget revenue projections. You're skipping that.
Um... Could we just skip that and do it when we go into fiscal year twenty-four budget workshop?
Sure. Okay, we're skipping over O, and we're going into, um... We're gonna go into executive session on this, uh, clerk, uh, contract with Goldsmith, so... Yeah, I guess that'll work, 'cause we gotta come back anyway, so. We're gonna go into executive session. And give Michelle Rodd time to gather all her beauties. Give Mr. Wilson the next one.